Welcome everyone to this December meeting of the Saginaw City Planning Commission. If you are here to present a case, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and make your presentation. We may ask you questions for clarity or for more information. A simple majority vote of the members present will decide on your request. If you are here to speak in the public comment phase of the meeting, please also come to the podium, give us your name and address, and direct your comments to the commission. We have no time limit, but gravity is appreciated. Mr. Faust, the roll call, please.
Jones, Zawerko, Nash, Nightingale, Hanley, Bryant, Dome.
First item is approval of the minutes from our November 28 meeting, which we have all received copies of. Do I hear any changes or additions?
I have one change. I show Nash being here and not being here, and he was not here.
Ah, well, sort of a double identity. All right. Any further changes to the minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
They're moved and supported. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have next item, approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We have a motion to amend the agenda.
Yes.
To remove item seven, public comment, to in front of number five, new business.
So that would seem like maybe a good idea.
Correct.
They're moved and supported. Any further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, this being public comment, anyone who wishes to speak, this is the time.
Okay, good. My name is Gregory Largent. My address is 915 Court Street. And I'm Director of Music Ministries at First Presbyterian Church at 121 South Harrison. And I'm here just as a, apparently a month ahead of when we need to be here, but just to let us know, let you know that, that experiment we had when they shut down Harrison, I think you all have a letter from our pastor about the events of that. It was, it was not a good experience. People started using our parking lot as a drive-through, got in the way of funerals. People were parked there that shouldn't have been parked there, and there wasn't room. There were some near misses with food pantry people that had come to get food. It poses problems while it was shut. Our Saturday string program, the Saginaw Strings, was not in session, but that's 80 children that are coming in and out of the building on that side that people were cutting through. We're just quite concerned about people taking shortcuts. We actually had to put up the chains that we used to put up for funerals to, you know, stop people coming through, but luckily, nobody went through the chains, so that was, that was a good thing. But we noticed a huge increase in traffic through our parking lot and near misses with people that were getting out of cars and, and driving through the parking lot at quite a rate of speed. So that's, that's my comment on the experiment that was going on with the street.
Hello, I'm Cindy Schatz. I live at 802 Adams Street on the corner of Adams and South Webster. And I too am either a month early, but not a day late, that's for sure. And I wrote a letter to Paula Diem and to city council members, and I did receive one phone call from one city council member, which I am thoroughly grateful for. And I was told that tonight you might be working, speaking about this, so I came. So I want to read you the letter, which I also gave you a copy of. We wanted to respond to the notification asking us if we wanted to permanently close 200 block of South Harrison between Adams and Cass Street. Our answer is no. We live on the corner of South Webster and Adams Street on the West Side Historic District. We have several concerns, having had the other Saginaw County project impact our neighborhood. These quality of life issues include, but not limited, the ones that I'm mentioning. One, increased traffic on South Webster, especially Adams and South Webster intersection. South Webster already has potholes, failing road conditions. Who will be maintaining that street? Since we will be the first through road for the cars, truck, and emergency vehicles to go on north or south after Michigan, will the county or the city be, are we getting something from the county for closing that road, road repairs, sidewalk repairs? This is a big question, because having lived for 31 years there, I do know that we give things to the county, but we don't get anything back. And that, there is neighbor after neighborhood could say that. There are already speed issues on South Webster. How will that be addressed? For years, we asked for some stop signs to slow the, when I first got here, years, to see if we'd get some stop signs on South Webster. We did get some yield signs on Adams Street, but it's like a bullet sometimes, especially in the middle of the night when they hit the pothole at South Webster and Adams. You can hear them bottom out in the middle of the night. That's not the only place it happens, I'm sure, but it wakes us up. Will we be getting new road lighting? The county buildings lighting and their parking lots have made a blinding spectacle of light every night. The, the construction of buildings, which obviously they're going to want to build a building, would make night lights a blight in our community. I don't know if any of you have ever stood on the corner of Adams and South Webster or, or Porter, or any of the streets going down South Webster, which is completely residential, except for the Martin and Martin Law Firm. It is all residential from Court to Mackinac and beyond, actually, and across 46 as well. And the lights there are terrible. Now, they have recently started turning them off late, late night, but sometimes there are no cars in the big parking lot, and the lights are blaring. I can't, I know people who have moved from their home on South Webster so they can get away from the lights. That was a promise that was broken to us, maybe whenever they built that parking lot. First Presbyterian Church has had many activities and traffic. We have noticed that our traffic counter is after the parking lot entrance on South Webster, and I just don't know that your, the data is going to be correct on that, especially now that all the activities are in full swing. Although it's not about, although this is not about closing the 200 block of South Harrison, the parking lot, which borders the historic district, was to have a natural barrier between our neighborhood and the lots, because that is an ordinance. If you're by a neighborhood, you gotta have a fence or a border. Our neighborhood said that we would like to have a natural border since we were a neighborhood, not a chain link fence or something like that. And the first, when it was first completed, the county planted probably about 100 arborvitae, maybe not that many, but they planted them, put some decorative trees in, it looked nice. Eventually, the arborvitae would have closed that off, and you wouldn't have been able to see the parking lot. Within three years, no longer maintained or watered, the arborvitae were dying and turning brown. They were dead shortly after that. And a couple of years to get them cut down, it was only happened because when we contacted, Randy and I contacted our friend Tom Basil, who was on the county commission. He drove down that street. He said he never goes down that street, but he did that day to see it, and within a week, they were cut down, but nothing was replaced. So now everybody who has a home on there, even from my front porch, I can look down and see the parking lot. It's, it's, I feel like there's no concern from the county about the quality of life in our neighborhood. Even though there are city council ordinance, well, I'm not going to read that. With a, with a record of not following through with their promises to maintain landscaping, be a good neighbor to us, how do you think we feel about the, the planning and not ensuring the quality of life with our historic district? We feel pretty bad about it. And if the street and the West District regulations, what, what, what are the regulations? It has now been my understanding, and I could be incorrect, so I would take, you know, if you say this is not true, I will believe you, that the county has bought the Fordney Coffee Law Firm, and I want to know what they're going to do with that building. Are they going to tear that down? Are they going to put another light? Are they going to put more lights up? We can't take any more lighting. It's, you would not want to live next door to it, I'm sure. I respectfully ask you to consider these things, and we will be back in January to listen to what some of your solutions to this are, but I'm very concerned about the county not keeping its word. And I'm hoping that as city administrators, and some of you as city council people, will come to 802 Adams. What's your address? 80 through Adams, and come and visit us one evening and see our lighting situation. Our doors are open. We're nice people. I know about all of you. I don't know you, Ms. Jones, but I think I had met you someplace else, and I can't remember where, and I'm trying to think about it. But I'm just saying, we, we are, in our neighborhood, in the last year and a half, we have sold three houses. We have nine young children along that stretch. Now, they're under the age of six. We have another group that has junior high and high school. They are new people into our community. What are we saying to them about their reinvestment in the city? They all have purchased. So I'm just saying, please, please, when you consider this, come see us first. We would love to give you a glass of punch and a cookie. Okay? And it's nice to see all of you, and I hope you have a lovely holiday season, or a Merry Christmas, or a Happy Hanukkah. I'm not going to remember, because I have old timers disease. I have talked to them before and walked around with them, but it's a new guy now.
So I swear you gotta get a hold of him.
No, but you're going to make the decision on the street.
We will.
But that's what, I want you to come over and look at the situation before you make, and we can go to the county commission, and we will now.
To address somebody others you should have about the trees that were done to promises of that, because that's, that's uncounty property.
Well, I did walk somebody around after they were cut down, and they said, oh, we'll look into it. And they're gone still. So.
Thank you.
But thank you very much, Mr. Nash.
I'm Nancy Burdick. I'm at 803 Adams. I'll be real quick. Just a couple of things. One is that they've already chopped off Cass Street and Adams Street. Now they're going to chop off part of Harrison. It's just a real maze there. Also, as Cindy said, Webster is all residential. Harrison has only one small block of residence. The rest of it is either county or the Old Town Outreach, so that, that's a concern. Also, within 100 feet of my home, there are nine small children, and we just have to be careful for our neighborhood. So I thank you very much, and we'll see you again in January.
To the commissioners, good evening. My name is Laureen Jones. I reside at 3403 Churchill Lane, number two, in Saginaw, Michigan, 48603. And I'm just here to just read an announcement, if you will allow me. It's an announcement from the Saginaw Interdenominational Ministry Church, where the president and founder is the former mayor, Wilmer Ham MacZee. And the Saginaw Interdenominational Ministry Church will be having its 29th year celebration of a dream with the King. And the guest speaker will be Pastor Dr. H.J. Coleman, Jr. And this event will be held at the World Outreach Campus on Monday, January the 15th, 2018, 2405 Bay Street, Saginaw, Michigan, 48602. The doors will be open at 5:00 p.m., and it will start, the event will start at 6:00 p.m. The master ceremony will be Sir Terry Pruitt. Sororities and fraternities, pastors and ministers are welcome, and they're asked to wear black in memory of the honorable Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Thank you so much for allowing me to read this announcement.
To the commissioners, good evening to you. My name is Wilmer Jones Ham MacZee. I am so honored to be here today to let everyone know that on Zion Valley Missionary Baptist Church, they had the big event Sunday for me at 5:00. I want to say that our pastor, John Rancher, they have already got the sign, it's on 517 Carlisle Street. If you're not busy, just to come and ride about, I want you to see it. It is so nice, and I am so thankful for it. On Carlisle Street, my mother and father lived in that home. That's where I was born at, in that home on Carlisle Street, and it's just been just beautiful. I just want to take this opportunity also to explain to you, Solomon and Daniel Johnson, their family contacted me Saturday morning, because they wanted to talk to me concerning it, about that, and they had told me they have already had the bridge on Johnson Street in their names. So I want to thank them to let me know, because I had already told them that I would not be able to do that on the bridge on Johnson Street, because Pastor, Pastor Rancher, I'm talking about Zion Missionary Baptist Church, they have already told me about it, so I'm very excited about that, so I just want to let you know. And looking on the part and speaking about our honorable Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., he was a man that had a dream, and he wanted everybody to love everybody. He wanted everybody to respect everyone too. So I just want to share with that excitement that she's already announced concerning that, to please, please, if you can't, if you're not that busy, and if you can't, just pray for the celebration on that day, okay? I want to say it one more time. It will be Monday, Ju-, January the 15th, 2018, okay? If there's any questions at this time, any questions? Any questions? Any questions? Any questions? Any concerns? But I am so glad on Carlisle in memory of my mom and my dad's name, okay? Have a merry, merry Christmas and a happy, prosperous New Year. And we have 10 honorees, and somebody's standing right up here, one of the honorees, and guess who it is? And you're, they're going to send you a letter about it. We want you for the Dr. Martin Luther King, okay? And everybody have a blessed, blessed day.
Good evening, commissioners. It feels a little odd to be on this side, but I do want to bring some things to your consideration. I'm here regarding the petition to close the 500 block of South Harrison, and it's more the process than I'm here about. Because the process, I think, has had some failures in the recent past that involve what happened with South Fayette and now with South Harrison. My concern with the South Fayette, and I'm, they're together, so I have to bring them up together. The South Fayette study was that its conclusion, this traffic studies, this traffic flow conclusion stated, quote, "Before and after volume counts suggests that South Harrison Street will take most of the diverted traffic from the 500 block of South Fayette when it is vacated." Now, at that time, it was known that the sheriff would be asking for closure of the 500 block of South Harrison. Since that was known, there was, it, it is beyond me why that South Fayette Street petition wasn't halted until a study was completed of South Harrison as well. And the reason is very simple. If the, that volume count suggested that traffic would shift to South Harrison, then by closing South Harrison, you're cutting off that avenue. So how could your study, or how could that volume count study be accurate? It simply could not have been, and wasn't. So what you have now is a serial situation. South Fayette was granted. Now you do a study of South Harrison. But the interesting part is that study never addressed what traffic shift would have occurred back to South Fayette if South Harrison was shut off, was closed. I say that because I went and looked where the count equipment was placed, and there was nothing that addressed what would go back to South Fayette to Grasham. So your study now of South Harrison is not accurate as well, whatever the conclusion will be. So you've got two studies, neither of which can be accurate, because it wasn't done together. So to me, that was a fatal flaw in that study, and should never have been recommended to council at that point, without South Harrison having been included. In other words, if you have a shift back to South Fayette without it being closed, you cannot measure it now, because it's approved as closed. There were other flaws in the study, or in the, in the resulting evaluation, in my opinion. I asked what police or public safety departments were contacting for input. The response was only the sheriff's department, not other public agencies, such as the, any of the, the other police agencies that might use the jail. The reason that was important is because they used Fayette as well. If they weren't asked, you weren't getting adequate input. There were also inmates in the jail who have visitors. Who studied those? There were never any, as far as I can determine, they weren't asked of their input, and certainly South Fayette was part of their contact, or the, the way they approached the jail from Grasham. So the study, the traffic flow study became even more important, but it was not accurate, because you're talking about Harrison taking it, and now you're talking about closing it. So by not addressing usage by others than the sheriff, your, your study was, quite frankly, inadequate as well. Also, when I asked what was the sheriff's input, is my understanding, he had no objection to the South Fayette closure, but quite bluntly, what's the surprise there? He knew he'd be coming to you weeks later with the request to close South Harrison. The last thing he wanted to do was say, don't close another street, because that wouldn't look too well for him, asking for a closure himself. So that, to me, is suspect. Also, the report for South Fayette stated the main users of South Fayette were those going to, this is the conclusion, were going to the church or else the courthouse, ignoring all those users of the jail, all those visitors. The other part that wasn't addressed, as far as I can determine, and maybe you can answer this, is who got the notice regarding the senior housing facility there? If it was the housing commission, what assurance do you have that all those people living in that housing commission had any input into your decision? They should have each gotten a notice for input. It's my understanding they didn't. Now, if that's wrong, I apologize. But my understanding is it was the housing commission that got the notice. They had no burden to, no obligation to notify all their residents of that, or if they did, how do you know it was accurate notice? You have many dozens of people living in that who use Fayette and, and Harrison, as this study that you were looking at for South Harrison addressed that issue. Because you'll be blocking both South Fayette now and South Harrison, two of the main access points. To me, that seems a huge deficit in the study or in conclusions if those people are not asked their input. And I want to mention the other users, of course, of the, of the, both the courthouse and of the jail are other police agencies, which, again, weren't measured, or weren't asked for input. Next, you have, there was only one major business that I'm aware of on South Fayette, and that was the thrift store, the dollar store. Yes, it fronts on Michigan, but it has two or the three entrances off of South Fayette, all of which now are going to be impacted, particularly if you close both South Fayette and Harrison. People use those entrances. The final thing that I'm really concerned about is, when I read the report, it was my understanding that the conclusion was that those who did not respond to the notices, their non-responses were taken as approval. To me, that is insane. If someone doesn't vote, their, their non-voting isn't taken as approval on an election. Their non-vote simply means they didn't vote. It's a non-entity. It doesn't mean anything, one way or the other, but you, this commission took that, those non-responses, as I understand it, as affirmative votes. You can't do that. In looking at those that did respond, there were 13 responses, I understand, 10 of whom objected. These are the ones closest to the South Fayette closure, but their, their opinions were given no weight when it was compared to all the non-responses that were given weight. Again, it's the process that makes no sense to me. I think, and I'd urge the commission, to take a better look at the process that's being used, both in the traffic count study and in the conclusions that you reach from responses or non-responses. I'm not going to speak one way or the other about the need of the sheriff's, the sheriff for his jail. That's not what I'm here about. I'm here about the process that happens here, that this commission uses for evaluating petitions. You have a lot of input. You need to give the weight where it belongs, on those most, those most affected. You need to determine the impact of the closures that you've now recommended for South Fayette and whatever is being asked for for Harrison, how it impacts, impacts everybody that uses the jail, the courthouse, the church, the senior citizens in that area. And you need to be able to properly look at where, what your decision will do. The sheriff does have other, other alternatives than closing the street. It may be best for him to do that, from his perspective and from the county's perspective. So you need to weigh that in making a recommendation versus with regard to all the other input that you receive, that is actual input, not non-responses. And I would ask also that you make sure you contact those, such as the senior citizens, for adequate input. Having said this, again, I thank you for your time, and I wish you luck in making a recommendation, because it's, I think you've got a tougher job than might have been thought at first. Thank you.
Hi, just real quickly, my name is Robert Burdick, 803 Adams. All the concerns we've already heard. I, I called and tried to find out from the county what's going to happen during the construction process of this jail, which I understand could be 18 to 24 months. I couldn't get any answers about where they're going to stage the equipment and the materials for this. Where are the employees going to park for two years while they're doing all of this work? You know, are they going to park on the side streets? You know, when all of this construction is going on? So nobody's been able to give me any answers about, you know, where the construction equipment is going to be, where the is going to be, where the materials are going to be placed, you know, what, how big the construction zone is going to be. So I had concerns about that. That's going to be 18 to 24 months that our neighborhood is going to be upside down if this goes forward. So, thank you.
Do we have anyone else for comment during this public comment phase? If not, we'll move on to our agenda. Bringing us to case 0051, public hearing for a recommendation to city council on the wording of the new Form-Based Code ordinance under consideration now for the Riverfront Mixed-Use District. So this public hearing is now open for that purpose, if there is anyone who wishes to speak on that issue.
As you know, over the last year to 16 months, we've been looking at a Form-Based Code for the Riverfront Mixed-Use District downtown and all along the river, from the north city limits down to Russ Street. We have had some meetings with the public at Hoyt Library here in the council chambers. We also had a meeting with architects to discuss the buildings and what they would look like and the materials that they would like to use. We've had a couple of presentations at various council meetings regarding the Form-Based Code and what it says. You got the last draft about five minutes after I did, which was at 4:45 yesterday, but there weren't many changes in the final draft from what you had seen the month before. We added a section on bicycle parking. On parking, I think we expanded that a little bit, just to go into some detail on that. Even with the Riverfront Mixed-Use District and the ordinance the way that it is currently, we can waive some of the parking of those requirements in areas where there is a public lot nearby or where there are other lots that could be used. We've used that in certain circumstances over the last 15 years. Not a lot, though. Usually, we have required that the parking remain on what our ordinance says for parking. The new ordinance has, in the parking section, says that the commission can waive 50% of the parking if they think that it's, that it will not impact the rest of the neighborhood too greatly. The other thing that this ordinance does, the proposed ordinance, is we are really encouraging shared use agreements with other lots in cases where there may be an office that's open eight to five, and there may be a bar that's open more later in the day, so that they can both use the same lot. We're very much encouraging that in the new ordinance. If there is a public lot within 500 feet, we can reduce the amount of parking that's allowed. 500 feet, you can figure is a block and a half to two blocks. I think what we're going to see downtown, and in Old Town especially, is we want to make that area more walkable. There is, there's some leeway with parking if people install bicycle ramps. We are trying to encourage that people walk more, that buildings be more condensed for their use. Any new structures that are built would be closer to the street so that people can see what's going on and walk down the street, maybe have more businesses. In the downtown area, in Old Town area, we are, well, in downtown, any new construction will have to be at least three stories high. In Old Town, at least two stories high. I think in part what that does is we will keep out some of the box stores where a lot of parking is required, where those stores take up about a whole block. We want that area more so that people can walk and maybe visit five, six, seven, eight businesses in a block instead of one. That's what we're hoping to accomplish with the Form-Based Code. We had LSL Consulting from Royal Oak help us with this. They've also developed a similar type of code for various cities around the state, Lansing, Ferndale. They've done about eight or nine of them. I'm not thinking of the other cities right offhand. So I think that that's what we're trying to accomplish with this code. I know that you guys have had, been through this a couple of times. It's lengthy, it's 27 pages in length. The map was changed slightly from our last meeting. If you notice, and the map is on page two, that there was an area on East Genesee that had been included in previous maps, but that was taken out of the Riverfront Mixed-Use District six or seven years ago. Also, Potter Street was taken out because that area was also taken out at the same time, six or seven years ago. The previous map showed more what the current use of that property is, and it was really, what we've done is we've created six sub-districts within the Riverfront Mixed-Use District. Some of those districts in the initial map were only, maybe even less than a block in size. That just wasn't workable for what we wanted to do. So some of those areas were consolidated. Some of them had urban flex and Riverfront Commercial, and those, parts of those were consolidated. The Urban Edge District was expanded in some areas around the edge of downtown and Old Town. And Riverfront Commercial was expanded in a few places on Washington and on Michigan. Otherwise, there weren't major changes to that, but there were some. The Riverfront Residential, we had spaces all around the perimeter of this area. Some of them were two lots in size, and that just really didn't make sense, so some of those were eliminated. This ordinance does protect any historic homes that are already built. They can operate just as if they were in a residential area. They can be expanded, a garage can be added, they can be rebuilt if they're destroyed. We're trying to limit single-family ranch-style houses. Those will not be allowed in this district. But if you want to come in into one of these areas that are considered residential and build a large historic house, like a lot of these houses are, there would not be a problem in doing that. So we're trying to preserve what is already there. If you have, some of the larger buildings on Michigan, the larger homes have been turned into offices. For the most part, if you wanted to change that back to a single-family home, that would not be a problem under this ordinance. So we've looked at that, we've looked at this in detail, like I said, for about 16 months now. So I'm open to any questions.
One of the earlier things you said about the ability we have to alter that 50% of parking?
Yes.
That would only be after a public hearing, I assume?
That would be part of any site plan review. It would be addressed at that point, where the public could participate in that. Oh, that was one of the other things. The original draft of this, all new construction was going to be reviewed administratively, and that has been changed in the final version. That will, any new construction will come before the planning commission. Any additions to construction that are over 25% will come before the planning commission, and that's similar to what the old ordinance was as well. So, and then from talking to the architects, one of the initial ideas was in the downtown area that any new buildings might be all brick. Well, the architects said, "No, we don't want that." There are a lot of new materials out there that look nice, that look like an urban type of building, and they wanted the option to be able to use those. But the planning commission will have a lot of leeway in determining what that, what that building looks like in the end. I mean, you still follow the Riverfront guidelines and what they have, but I think that this ordinance will even tighten up on that so that you can have a better look in building. As an example, if someone came and wanted to put a building downtown and it had all vinyl siding on it, you could shut that down, that idea down immediately. Same with cement block buildings or something like that. We don't want pole barn-type buildings in our downtown area, in our Old Town area, and that can all be addressed by the planning commission under the new ordinance.
I have a question, I have a definition. I ask you this in your office, and forgive me, I've forgotten what your answer was.
I probably didn't give you one.
I'm concerned about, my question is about the Shaheen condos on Hamilton. Are those apartments? Are they townhouses? Are they urban houses? Where do they fit in?
Those would be considered townhouses.
Well, I noticed that they're treated, apartments and townhouses are treated differently. For example, in the downtown, the Main Street category, it takes a special land use issue on townhouses, but not in apartments. What's the rationale there?
I think the rationale is in the downtown area, you want a more condensed area, more people living there, so apartments are allowed because there would be more people living in that area. Where townhouses, like the ones on Hamilton, they're, they're nice-looking, but they're, you don't have as dense of a population living in that area as you would as if it was entirely apartments. So that's why I think the townhouses are a special land use. I don't think that, we aren't saying that they're, they would not be allowed at all, but it's something to look at. How much, you know, in those areas, we want more walkability. How much do those townhouses take away from that walkability? If they were on the edge of one of these downtown or Old Town areas, maybe not so much. If they were dead center in the middle of it, that may make a difference. And so that's why it's a special land use. Whereas the apartments, one thing with apartments is it can be a mixed-use building where the first floor is commercial, so you've still got a lot of things for the people to see as they're walking down the street, and you've got a lot of apartments above that.
Isn't that what's being built right now?
That's Phase Three of the Hamilton Street.
In Phase Three, that's going to be a mixed-use facility?
Right, that will be mixed-use, so be commercial on the first floor.
So that would be treated differently than the other condos right next to them?
Right. It would have been, in the ordinance, it would have been, under the new ordinance, it would be treated differently.
I guess I don't understand the logic of that. It seems to me that there's an awful lot of concentrated condos, whether we call them condos or apartments or townhouses, there's a big concentration of population in that strip.
Well, compared to what we've had in the past, you're right, there's a lot more there now. But compared to those townhouses versus, let's say that that whole block had been built as apartments, we would have even a greater population if it was all apartments versus those townhouses. And that's what we're looking for in the downtown and Old Town area, is a more condensed area with more people. And preferably, and this would, again, would be up to you, with commercial on the first floor and living above that, to give you still that downtown feel and more businesses within a more confined area.
Okay, so Phase Three, those are apartments with commercial on the ground floor, and that would be, that's different than the townhouses?
Yes.
Do we have any other questions or comments?
My name is Steve, so I have property at 308 North Hamilton, next to the condos you brought up. And part of my question is, the planning of that whole project, there was no notification put out for any of the neighbors in the neighborhood to come and ask questions or anything about it. And so during the process of this whole thing, the building immediately next door to us that you're speaking on was supposed to have been two stories. It's turned into a three-story building. I counted approximately, going on the internet, there's 84 bedrooms on that property and approximately 60 parking spots. And so part of my question is, what's the planning for parking, the impact of that parking for the neighborhood, for the businesses that are down there, so the people that do live there can have guests to come and visit them? I noticed the north street between the condos and the manufacturing plant, that there's three or four vehicles that are parked there constantly overnight, that are sitting on the city street at night, when there's an ordinance against that. So they're kind of making their own parking spots. My question is, where's everyone supposed to park that is living there and they're guests? And why wasn't there any notification sent out for someone such as myself that has property next to it to ask any questions before the ground was even broken?
I would say that, because that project started way before this project. Husband on the table is 46 years.
And there was never any notification mailed to me. And when I had to ask questions, it's kind of like, nobody ever has an answer.
There almost would have been letters sent out, that something you'd have to ask the city.
Could you comment on that?
Because those are allowed uses in the Riverfront Mixed-Use District, no notification goes out. It's a site plan review on what the project in general is going to look like, but there's nothing in the ordinance because it isn't allowed use already.
So now that you're saying, though, earlier I thought I understood you to say that in the future, once you change this ordinance, that something new goes up, there will be a notice sent out?
No, there's still nothing in the ordinance. Because it's, it's an allowed use in the district. If it was a variance and someone was asking to put something in that's not allowed in the district, then notices would go out to everyone within 300 feet. But because it's an allowed use, there's no notification required under state law or in our ordinance.
Do we have any other further comments or questions on the zoning code? Any further questions? And for the last time, any further comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is...
No, at this point, you need to make a recommendation to council and have discussion between yourselves.
Kind of a key thing. So I will entertain a motion to recommend the city council, the Form-Based Code.
And just so you know, your recommendation today probably will not go to council until February. And one of the reasons for that is our consultant will be at the strategic planning session for council on January 20th to give them background on what we've done for the last year and to answer any questions that council may have. After that hearing, it will probably be brought to council with a meeting after that, unless there's some more feedback that makes it come back to us again.
So with that clarification, we have a motion on this issue.
Support.
Been moved and supported. All those in favor? Been moved and supported. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is old business. Does anyone? Oh, I'm sorry, capital improvement plan information and discussion.
My name is Brian Weiss, and I am the budget analyst in the Office of Management and Budget, and I have been tasked with compiling the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2019, and will be briefly covering the process and some major projects for the upcoming Starting is, what is a capital improvement plan? It's a tool to assess the long-term capital project requirements of a government agency, details a minimum of six years of projects and improvements, and is reviewed annually. It coordinates projects to minimize construction costs and impacts, and coordinates with the city's master plan, redevelopment strategy, and budget. There are many reasons to prepare a capital improvement plan, and some of them are to... Oh, sure. Oh, sure, I apologize. Is that a little better? I don't know if you can...
It's okay, but you just have to...
Oh, okay, no problem. Okay, why prepare a CIP? It optimizes the use of taxpayer dollars, matches community needs with the resources, anticipates and plans for major investment, creates transparency in the government, encourages economic development, and improves financial stability. And capital improvements are physical facilities or assets that involve a substantial investment and last a long time. So usually what we consider a capital improvement is something that will be used for more than the current year, since we budget on a year-to-year basis. This is something that's longer term than that. And we'll include examples such as city hall, municipal truck, new park pavilion, new bridge, roads, sewer lines, and even larger pieces of equipment like a ladder truck for the fire department. And like I mentioned, it's important to note the difference between a capital expenditure and an operating expense, because they're not the same thing. Operating expenses are typically day-to-day activities that will last short-term within that year, that budget year, and capital expenditures are used much longer. Our capital plan lists proposed new capital projects, embraces them in detail such as department request, project name, location, date of construction, costs and means of financing, and an analysis and explanation of what the project is. And these projects are prioritized by three different groups, by the department themselves, the planning commission, and the city manager. And our CIP covers a six-year period and is updated annually. And if you see on this graph on the left side, or this chart, it is a percentage breakdown by fund based on total amount of dollars requested. And you can see in this graph that the water fund requests 59% of the total dollars. And so that's worth noting that there are major capital requests and capital projects that are required by the water department. The capital budget process begins at the department level. Department directors are responsible for the development of functional plans and long-term capital improvement schedules for the next six years. And these departments are also responsible for development of project requests prepared on a standard computer template that is provided to them from OMB. And this data is then sent to OMB for review. Then OMB is responsible for creating the capital budget for the city, and this office develops the necessary procedures with the departments. And at the beginning of the budget development process, staff provides instructions to the departments for how to create their capital requests and assigns a due date for providing those requests to OMB. And once all requests have been received, OMB reviews and, reviews the requests and discusses any questions or concerns with the department. And next, a summary of requests is created and provided to the city manager for review. The city manager evaluates capital project requests and determines which capital expenditure projects should be undertaken. And these capital projects are then presented to city council and the city's planning commission along with the capital financing strategy for review and approval. And it's important to note that there is a distinction between the way the city council receives the list of capital projects and the way that the planning commission does. The planning commission receives a planned list of capital projects and binders like you have in front of you that contain each request, as well as a summary of projects and anticipated costs. And the city council receives the requested capital projects as part of the annual proposed budget that they approve every year in May. This occurs after the departments, city manager, and planning commission all have a chance to review and give prioritization ratings to each project, and then the highest priority projects are selected for council's approval. Any project exceeding $20,000 must be submitted for consideration and ranking with the following criteria: either land or non-structural improvements, new structures, any major repair or replacement of $20,000 or more, non-garage equipment, or any motorized vehicle or equipment purchased or replaced at $250,000 or greater. Requests for the CIP projects will be submitted to the planning commission for their review and prioritization, and these CIPs are provided to the planning commission in December, or what's going on right now at this meeting. And discussion of the prioritization will be in January's meeting. This is required under Public Act 33 of 2008, which says that the planning commission is required to review all public improvement projects to ensure compliance with the master plan and zoning ordinance and prioritize those projects and provide these proposed improvements to city council. And here is an example of a capital request using the layout of the form the departments fill out and provide to OMB. At the top of the form are fields to list the department, project name, estimated cost, estimated funding, location, and priority ratings from the department, city manager, and planning commission. Beneath that is a breakdown of the estimated costs by year as well as the source of funds by year. In this example, only a small amount of the total cost is expected to be incurred in the upcoming year with the rest coming in future years. Next is an explanation of what the project is and why it is important, and gives the department the opportunity to explain how, what this project is for and why it's needed so badly. And finally, the last section covers the location of the project, how much the cost will be in years beyond the upcoming year, whether other matching funding such as grants would be lost if the project is not completed, the type of project it is such as routine replacement or new project, and whether the project is in accordance with the master plan, council policy, or local, state, and federal regulations. And following that is, here are the planned street projects requested for fiscal year 2019. We'll begin with the North Hamilton Street enhancement, and this project has already been completed, and that $5,000 that's budgeted is for maintenance related to trees that were planted during the project. Here are all the other street projects requested, and these projects utilize Act 51 money, which we receive from the state. The Niagara Street reconstruction, Norman Street Bridge, and Lepire Avenue reconstruction projects are in the beginning stages, and only design costs are budgeted for fiscal year 19. The Lepire Avenue reconstruction has been broken up into two separate projects, with the section from 9th to 11th Street being completed in fiscal year 19, and the section from 6th to 9th Street being completed by fiscal year 2021. Community development block grant funding is included in the amount of $175,000 for work done on Lepire in fiscal year 19. The Mackinac Street reconstruction is from Congress to state and will include water main and catch basement, catch basin replacements as well. The annual cape seal and mill and resurface projects are annual projects where different streets will be chosen and a cape seal or resurface will be done on those streets. And sidewalk repairs will be completed in regards to complaint letters that are filed, and ADA sidewalk ramps will be installed in neighborhoods. And these sidewalk projects are necessary because a percentage of Act 51 monies must be spent on sidewalks. This is the water and sewer projects. Lake Linton, near the water treatment plant, needs to be dredged in order to increase capacity and improve quality of raw water. The Kochville project is related to the water bond that was issued in fiscal year 2017 to replace raw and finished water mains along Davis Road in Kochville Township, and is expected to be completed in fiscal year 19. The transmission feed Junction Road project would improve service to the Frankenmuth area where we provide water services. Sewer main maintenance has been an ongoing project and continues in fiscal year 19 and future years. The replacement of a water main on Bay Road from State Street to White Street and relining Miller Street will improve service to customers in the northern and western service areas. And a major project coming up is, the city anticipates new regulations are to be put in place by the state to require replacement of lead water lines, and so a plan has been put in place to begin addressing this. The plan covers 20 years, will replace about 5% of lines each year, and is estimated at a total cost of $60 million for the project. These projects are planned for future fiscal years, and they include improvements to water distribution systems in St. Anon Township and Birch Run. For facilities projects, the Public Works North parking lot, which is across the street right behind you, is requested to be repaired since it's not had much maintenance in decades, and many residents used the lot when coming to city hall or the Public Works building. The Forest Lawn Chapel is in need of repair and wants to be done in order to try and beautify and improve the public perception of the cemeteries. The Bolt Lounge parking lot needs to be repaired in order to create a more orderly and appealing appearance. And the east, this east side of city hall is planned on becoming handicap accessible, and replacing the entrances will create a savings in energy by reducing the amount of airflow, especially in the wintertime, coming through the doors. And finally, for the Ojibwe Grant project, this is a grant-funded project to make improvements to Ojibwe Island. This has been included in the current year's budget, but work is not expected to begin until late May or early June, so work will continue into fiscal year 19. And finally, here's a timeline for the entire capital improvement process. Forms were sent to the departments in October 23rd with a request to be returned to OMB by November 6th. And then forms were, CIP forms are then presented to the planning commission tonight. And the planning commission members will rank the projects individually by February 27th meeting. And that report is compiled by priority and submitted to the city manager for consideration. And the planning commission will be advised as to which projects will be undertaken after the budget has been approved by city council before June 30th. I know I went pretty quickly, so I'm sure you have some questions?
Any questions?
When we, when we rate these items, 1, 2, 3...
Yes.
Should we be cognizant of the number of 1s that we use, the number of 2s, the number of 3s, or can we rank them all numbered 1s or all numbered 2s?
You can rank them however you wish, whatever you feel is the most important needs in the community. So if you don't believe that a certain road project needs to be done at this time, or it does, versus something else, you can rate them based on however you feel about that.
So I can have 80% 1s?
Sure, if you'd like to. Yes.
What is the Wicks Park merger?
Oh, that is a project to repurpose part of the Wicks Road into a non-motorized pathway, and that's going to be part of the Iron Belt Trail eventually.
If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So with that, we are to the next item, which is old business.
I have more.
I have one question.
Okay.
At our previous meeting, we realized that we did not have sufficient guidelines for renaming streets and/or bridges. Has any movement taken place on developing a process for doing that, or are we kind of occupied with other things at the moment?
Well, I was hoping when I did the minutes for the last meeting that I'd see something in there that, as you commissioners addressed each issue, that you came up with some criteria, but there wasn't much that was consistent. So, so one thing that I thought we would do is, there is an ordinance in the making that would go to council, or has already been introduced at council, to change the process for renaming streets and bridges. I thought that maybe once that ordinance was passed, that at that point, we could have as part of one of our meetings a session to go through that ordinance, and then maybe set some criteria that everyone can agree on, so that there is criteria to follow in the future based on the new ordinance.
Any further old business from anyone? If not, that brings us to adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Oh, for next year?
Other meeting dates.
We do need to approve that?
Yeah, we have in the papers.
I will entertain a motion to approve the schedule of meetings for next year.
So moved.
Been moved and supported. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. So now, we are adjourned.